Okay, so we'll call the regular meeting Monday, March thirteenth to order. Please stand for the, uh, for the meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my people, and their liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, would you do the go first, please?
Sure. Father, please be present here tonight as we make decisions on behalf of the city. Give us wisdom and kindness as we consider the matters that are before us today. In the name of your son and his son's grace. Amen.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
Ms. Tingle?
Here.
Mr. Dunkey? Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
And Sonic?
Here.
Let's see, did everybody receive the minutes from the last meeting and the special meeting? Okay, motion to approve those?
So maybe?
Second.
Mr. Summers? Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Let's see, do we have a auditor treasurer report tonight?
I can go and give it. I didn't come prepared, but.
Okay.
Can you go ahead? I thought you guys had to put me out until next week. Can I, uh, just seal the reports? The technology, yeah.
No.
No, you shouldn't be doing it.
Okay. We just said it for weeks now. You're not prepared and it's not on you.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I figured.
All right.
Okay.
Um, any citizens comment?
Alright, my name's Leslie Orange. Um, I am the volunteering director for the Tunnel to Towers 5K, um, which we're coming back again this year for our second year. Um, for if any of those of you who don't know, um, Tunnel to Towers is a foundation created out of New York um, that honors military and first responders. Um, the family of firefighter Stephen Siller created the foundation after he died in the line of duty from on nine eleven going from the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers. And so the foundation, they step in and they help families of fallen first responders and military. Um, my husband was a Nelsonville City firefighter that died in the line of duty in twenty twenty one. And this foundation stepped in and they had paid, uh, for my brand new home and gave me a mortgage free home. So with that, I do this race to honor Jeff and to give back to the foundation. So basically, I'm just giving some information out about it. I'm asking for sponsorships, um, volunteers that come help out, uh, people to register for it. And to basically have the city help us with it. Um, last year, we did fifty four thousand dollars is what we raised from the race. And we had almost five hundred participants the day of. So, um, I can give these around. But these are, what Harry's got here, these are postcards, um, that give all the information about the 5K. And I have more if anybody wants them. And then I've got sponsorship packets if anybody's interested in, you know, helping be a sponsor if the city is. Uh, I think I gave one to, you know, for the city. Um, and then. Just looking for sponsorships, people to register. Um, last year, we tried to get the fountain turned on for the day of because everything takes place at the square. And I don't know if that's something we could work on to try to have it, the fountain turned on for the day of the race, which is April thirtieth. Anybody have any questions?
The money goes for the race.
What this, the money goes for that I raise, it goes back to New York and it goes to the foundation. And the foundation, um, they either build smart homes for catastrophically injured or fallen veterans. And they, um, or they pay off home mortgages for fallen first responders. Welcome. Anywhere, anywhere in the United States. So like, here, I can actually cut it. Last year in Ohio, the foundation, I think the foundation altogether has done over two hundred homes. But in Ohio, they have built three smart homes. They've had, paid off twelve fallen first responder homes. And then there's, it's called the Gold Star Family Program that they've done five. And the Gold Star Family Program deals with the military. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone here know when the, um, set date is to turn on the fountain? Because if this is a yearly thing, we might just.
It should be. My sister knows that, so she'd like to have it done. This depends on what kind of option you have.
Okay.
I'll talk to her.
Okay, great.
And so this is a big beholder, so.
Well, we made sure, freeze.
Sure, yeah.
What's wrong?
Good. Thank you, Ms. Arms.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, any business or organizational comments? Okay, um, department, or I'm sorry, uh, any committees meet since the last council meeting?
We're still finding our feet on committees right now.
Um, let's see here. Department updates. Chief Oliver?
Yep.
Okay.
So for the month of February, we had two hundred and twenty-four calls for service. We made seventeen arrests of the trust files, fifteen different individuals for properties. Uh, we conducted sixty traffic stops and issued twenty-eight citations. Uh, we're still down three officers and I mean leads on, little news though.
Isn't there a date that the civil service has makes this?
Yeah, I'm in the middle of scheduling that right now. They scheduled the fire department a date, but they haven't gone back to me with the set date yet.
Okay.
So the week of May the fifteenth is the, uh, the week that we were looking at. They scheduled the fire department for May seventeenth. So it's gonna be probably, um, the day before, the day after that, I would say.
Okay, you're saying the fifteenth and the seventeenth?
We're assuming it's gonna be the May seventeenth is the fire department's day.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we didn't see email Kevin in yet for the set date of this one.
Now, have you gotten the resumes for the, which, I'm sorry, it should be, probably be you. Have you gotten resumes for the position?
For the officer, so are you talking about the new resumes or the officers?
Well, the, the officers and, I hate to say it, but the new chief.
That would go to the city manager. Yeah, the chief resume would go to the city manager.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, what's the status of the sale of Attila and, uh?
So we've already received the check for that and we need a finance committee meeting to get it appropriated.
Got it, okay.
The Wilson Finance Committee meeting for some donations maybe get appropriated as well.
All right, good for finance committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I have one last.
Okay.
So the master handler should be going to pick up our new canine today. And then Officer Tippy will be in canine training with Dog, um, on the tenth of April.
I'm sorry, Officer who?
Tippy.
Tippy?
Tippy, T-I-P-T-I-E.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, ordinances, we have one listed for first reading. Um.
Is there a code update?
I'm sorry.
Today, I think she had some kind of appointment.
So are we doing ordinance twelve twenty-three for first reading?
Right.
Okay.
This is the one we were gonna.
All right. Um, so we have to amend the ordinance to, or amend the agenda to add ordinance thirteen twenty-three and fourteen twenty-three. Would someone like to make a motion for that?
I will.
Second. Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes. Okay, so ordinance thirteen twenty-three for first reading. Someone like to introduce that?
Oh.
Thank you.
And ordinance authorizing the city manager and/or city auditor to opt in to national opioid settlement to resolve opioid litigation against HEVA, Al- Alogen, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and to complete participation forms for each settlement and declaring an emergency. Whereas proposed nationwide settlement agreements have been reached that would resolve the opioid litigation brought by state, local, political subdivisions, and special districts against two pharmaceutical manufacturers, HEVA and Alogen, and three pharmacies, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Whereas settlements require that the manufacturers and pharmacies pay billions of dollars to abate the opioid epidemic. Whereas the city needs to opt in and participate in the opioid settlement and authorize the city manager and/or city auditor to perform all required acts necessary to participate in the settlement. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's Falls. The city hereby opts in and agrees to participate in the nationwide settlement agreement against HEVA, Alogen, and CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. The city manager and/or city auditor are hereby authorized to sign, enter into, and/or perform all legal acts necessary for the city to receive this nationwide settlement amount. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and its necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, own welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules of third review of March two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules?
Summer?
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes. Okay, ordinance fourteen twenty-three.
So you have a motion with a doubt?
I'm sorry, motion to a doubt.
Can I ask a quick question? Do we know how much money this would probably be?
Yes, it's one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
And twenty-nine cents.
It's what we get out of the twenty billion settlement.
I don't know if it gets.
There's another settlement.
Yeah, there was a prior settlement that we already got. Oh, okay. Some more amount too, but yeah, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you, Tracy, do you know if that's a yearly amount or is that just a one time?
That's a one time.
Oh, wow. The other settlement was yearly, so at least it was.
Yeah, um, it, I'll have to double check them out.
No, I believe you. I just, uh.
It could be yearly because there are, there are multiple, um, each, um, settlement has different yearly time periods, so, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to double check to see if that's just a one time or not.
It's too small either way. Yeah, I think Trumpo and Lake County, you got like eight, six hundred and fifty millions between those two Ohio counties?
We didn't get six hundred and fifty million. I'm stopped.
Yeah.
Hang on, we're right down the roof from the other side here.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, uh, motion to a doubt.
So.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes. Okay, ordinance fourteen twenty-three, would someone like to introduce that?
I will.
And ordinance authorizing the city auditor to place a portion, if not all, national opioid settlement agreement money in the K nine fund and declaring an emergency. Whereas proposed nationwide settlement agreements have been reached that would resolve the opioid litigation brought by state, local political subdivisions, and special districts against two pharmaceutical manufacturers, HEVA and Alogen, and three pharmacies, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Whereas settlements require that the manufacturers and pharmacies pay billions of dollars to abate the opioid epidemic. Whereas the city has agreed to opt in and participate in the opioid settlement and authorize the city manager and/or city auditor to perform all required acts necessary to participate in the settlement. Whereas since the settlement money fund is drug related, the city wishes to place a portion of this money, if not all of it, into the K nine fund. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's Falls. The city auditor is hereby authorized to place a portion of, if not all, the nationwide settlement agreement monies from litigation against two pharmaceutical manufacturers, HEVA and Alogen, and three pharmacies, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart into the K nine fund once it is received. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, own welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the thirteenth day of March two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, in the council discussion.
I got a question on this. So do we know exactly what we're allowed to appropriate this for? Usually there's restrictions on settlements for opioids and stuff like that, so.
Yes, it has to be opioid related, it's ordered, um, and has gone to video terms already to ensure that it's not allowable.
Uh, I got one problem with the wording as far as portion, if not all. I mean, it's either all or proportion. Dollar amounts are missing. Need to be more specific on what we're putting there.
We'd be putting any settlement money into that account. And technically, um, from the auditor's perspective, it would be designated for the K nine fund, but we can't put it in that line item. It has to be filmed on that. So it'll be very clearly identified.
I'm sorry, I'm just part of that, it would, we're going to put.
So the funds will be designated for the K nine.
Uh huh.
But we can't put it in that actual budget line item. We have to have it in its own line item.
Okay. And we're talking about the, the thirteen ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Yeah, so if you know that enough, why don't we put that in the order?
I think that's better than saying if not all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of vague.
I agree with, I can do that. I just didn't know what the amount was.
It's just, it's just kind of vague. I mean, it's not a super big rush to put that in with this. We can do it on the next meeting. So I think correct the language in it, put the amounts. And if we're gonna create a separate line item, we probably need that line item number to appropriate it to.
So should we table this for tonight?
I would table this for tonight and then, and then, uh, bring up the next meeting and do it under suspension of the rules and probably get it, then what do you want for it?
Okay, so I need a motion to table this motion. No, make the motion.
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Also, they look like to make a motion to remove ordinance twelve twenty-three from the agenda only to make it official, instead of just skipping over it.
To remove it, so.
From the agenda. So it's more official that's removed from the agenda, not just skipped over.
Actually, I would, I think I'd like to see it tabled and sent back to committee, finance committee.
Well, that's fine. Remove it from the agenda, same thing.
So, um, someone make a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we table ordinance twelve dash twenty-three.
Correct.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Ms. Sonic?
Hey, uh, yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to the city managers.
So lots has been going on. We've got the meter project is finally winding down. So we are about the last twenty-five meters to go with that project, so we're almost there. Um, also, the street sweeper will be out on the road this Friday. And staff are doing a training on Thursday to get, uh, more acquainted with the workings of it to make sure that, um, they can handle it well and handle any issues that come up with that. Uh, the Fort Street bus station in Buckville is getting put in. Uh, so that is coming. Uh. Rental registrations, so the, um, permits for rental registrations were due January first. And they're due every, uh, January first of each year. We did have a grace period for late payments which ended on February first. And as of today, there are still over thirty that are not paid. Uh, we did have to go back and confirm to make sure that there aren't any of those that are no longer rentals, but, um, I think there's about thirty that are still not paid for those. So those past due notices will be going out, um, next week. And there is a one hundred dollar late fee in addition to the registration fee of thirty dollars per unit.
Any questions for the city manager? Oh, I'm sorry. Done, yeah, okay.
Looked like you had a question there, so I was pausing for a second, sorry. Um, uh, myself and the code enforcement officer will be doing a floodplain permit training to update our process and to make sure, uh, we're up to date with all the new state rules. There have been some changes with, with state rules with the floodplains. So we'll be doing that, um, here in the next, um, month. There is also a lead line project coming. So the EPA is going to be mandating that we have to locate all, um, lead pipes that are in the water lines, including within houses. So, uh, there, the R cap, which is a rural community assistance program, is working with the EPA and they got a grant to come in and help us do that. So, uh, we are going to be, um, participating with them. So our cap staff will be working with us to, um, identify and map those lines within the city. So that, um, will be coming and so we'll have more information on that as we get flyers out and, uh, promote that out to the community as well. Um, and then we'll also put it on the water bills so that people can have a link there because they will have to, we're hoping that many people will self-identify first if they have lead pipes and they'll be a flyer with that process. Probably do that. Um, but that is coming, um, because that is, uh, we have to have the mapping done by September of this year and then, um, there are requirements after that with the EPA with the lead pipes. So we're trying to get more information about what those specific requirements with EPA will be as well as, um, at least get the mapping done as best we can and have that initial mapping given to the EPA by September.
So is there gonna be a, like a third party inspector kind of go through a house?
So it's, it's self-identifying first and those that need help, there will be assistance to help them. And so they will pick a week and actually have boots on the ground with people going door to door helping those that we have not yet identified.
Okay, I think, you know, I think we should have at least somebody qualified and identifying. Lead piping in houses, the landlord could have lead piping in a house and go, oh, it's costing us much money to change it all out, uh, no, I don't have any lead piping. Right, so.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some kind of checks and balances around that.
Yeah, so they're very familiar with this process. They've been doing it other places. So, um, they've got all the mapping software and everything, um, so it should be a pretty seamless project. Um, also, uh, from previous meetings, there was a question about the HR consultants that were gonna help with a number of human resource functions. Uh, I finally talked to them, um, and I've got a price quote from them, but I want to get some, um, comparisons and see what other companies are offering before we move forward with that uh, to make sure that that's reasonable pricing. And pool repairs, um, so it turns out that we had, uh, the previous city manager had signed, um, a quote with one of the vendor pool repair vendors. Uh, so, uh, conveniently that locked in the price for us. Uh, so looking at, um, moving forward with at least the repairs, not, not the refinishing of the whole pool, but we'll at least be able to get the repairs done, um, first with May to be able to make that hap- make that happen so we can get the pool open on time. Uh, we also have, uh, over twenty lifeguard applications in and we have four pool manager applications in as well. And that deadline is the end of the month for those applications. So hopefully we can get the manager in quickly and then get the lifeguards hired as well.
How many lifeguard positions total are there?
Um, we, uh, I don't know, twenty number yet.
There's twenty on staffing ordinance.
Twenty on the ordinance, okay. When they last year, they didn't have any workloads.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot more.
Yeah, so, um, but you know, that's all applications. We haven't reviewed them all, just specifics. So we are working on that and, um, and then the, uh, it looks like we still have some work to do on that application to get that finalized uh, because there are some specific guidelines with the State Department of Commerce, with public notices and the approval process, so.
But, but it just needs to meet again. I mean, the planning development committee that, okay, that was nine months ago and two people weren't on council anymore, so it just needs another.
So I just wanted to give an update that I located a lot of that information, um, although I'm not sure I have the most recent.
So how much was the estimate on the pool repair?
Uh, it is forty-six thousand. It is actually, um, it gave a range, so it's forty to forty-six thousand.
I thought it was like a hundred and fifty.
So that was a different price quote. This one was from back in September. Um, and this is just for the repairs, not for, to, to review the whole. That was, that other one was one that was not within the bid process and, um, that was to completely.
So this was cracked?
So this is for the, for the cracked ones, yes.
Any other questions for the city manager?
May I ask a question about the city?
Yes.
The repairs for the forty some, forty to forty-six thousand, will that take care of the water leaks or is it just a patch?
That is to take care of the water leaks and it's guaranteed for, uh, two years from date of completion.
I have a few questions. Um, who is currently in charge of, uh, the city's website?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. We have, uh, we have somebody who does the web updates, but no. He doesn't, unless it's whatever we give, whatever information we give to him to.
So the individual's name, Ryan Spellman, he takes care of the city's webpage. Um, he does that for free at tourist to the city.
Okay.
So when we need updates or things like that done, we usually just send them sense mail through a text message or email. They're adding, so.
Awesome. Um, well, maybe you and I can just like sit down for a few minutes and just, there's probably like ten spots that, you know, need some updates and we can just send them a bunch list and, uh, uh, this is sort of related and maybe a procedural question that you might have the answer to or somebody else might have the answer to. Uh, I spoke with Kevin. uh, this is sort of related and maybe a procedural question that you might have the answer to or somebody else might have the answer to. Uh, I spoke with Kevin Dodson, who is on the, um, Board of Zoning Appeals, and, and they, a- along with him and four others, they're, they're kind of ready to go. We have some people, uh, but they sort of had two blockers, uh, to, to really getting started. One is, and I didn't know the answer to this, is he, he wasn't sure if they need to be sworn in by council.
Sworn in by the lawyer.
Sworn in by the lawyer, but they need to come and have that happen.
Council needs to approve them and then, uh, they get sworn in by the lawyer.
Okay, so we need to do that, uh, because they're ready to go. And then the second was, he, and, and him and I talked, and I was like, how, what's the best way for, because I had some people asking me about zoning questions, and I said, we'll talk to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they look on the website and said, I don't know how to get a hold of these people. So the question is, is, uh, how should they be contacted? Kevin's preference is that possibly the council clerk and city manager could be the people in the, in the town that, like, a citizen goes to, and then you would pass that along to whoever the board chair is, so that they could set up the time to have a deal.
Yeah, um, the code enforcement has been doing that, because we have the several that seems to intermingle with all of the permits and everything, so, um, it makes sense to have.
So just, right, citizens in the future to the code enforcement office?
Yeah, because we've got all, you know, we've got a number of things to click on.
Okay. Cool, yeah, so then, I think, just the next step then is to, to get them approved by council and sworn in.
Well, I have a question. Have we received any official letters of interest on the zoning laws?
There were some people identified. I don't know who all was involved in that.
Right.
And I'm not sure who all are.
Right, I was approached by the president of City Council, Tony Dunphy, and by the code enforcement officer, asking me if I could find anyone or some people who might be interested, and so the six names that were gave to Tony Dunphy and kept, their names were read at the last meeting, I think Linda Redmond possibly out loud, but there are six people who are willing to serve. And they're just waiting, and all I did was ask them if they would please consider serving on the board who I believe are people who care about the community. It isn't a secret if they are, there's, if I remember them, there's Kevin Dodson, there's Mark Hall Senior, there's Jane Harmony, there's Nicole Tolliver, and.
Kevin Dodson and Terry Kuhn.
And Terry Kuhn. So I, I know you're familiar with all of those people.
Sure, well.
Nobody, no, but I just said I was asked to see if you would consider an appointment. That was how Tony presented it with me, and I believe the city manager was aware of when that took place.
I think, is that the one?
Uh, it seems to be a little confusing. I don't know if we should move on that tonight or wait till Mr. Dunphy's back.
I'm, when we served, I have served on planning for over twenty years. However, in the past two years, due to circumstances beyond our control, the city manager handled everything. We never got to have the opportunity to participate in that. So hopefully that won't be the case with this group of people, because I do believe all of them, as you do.
Correct.
Care, as you do, meaning that you also, it's a commitment that you make. There's no pay with any of these positions. It's just simply volunteer. And I, I believe that is, that they are truly interested. I did not ask to be chair of the by the means I was requested to do.
Is that something we can set a special for, bring them in and talk to them, and then move forward from that point?
One of the things I'm concerned about is the longer we've asked these people, are you willing to do this, and then we wait, and we wait, and we wait, and we wait, and they say, I offered, they didn't take me up on it.
That's why I was thinking if we set a special, we handle it all that night.
But we don't need to interview them. It's not like a job.
But we have to swear them in.
Well, they can come, first we have to approve them as a council, so we have to do that and then invite them in to be sworn in. That, that's where we are.
Consider it for one night, it's all done and then, versus like two more weeks for another.
Come in for two nights.
I know, what I'm saying is two weeks until the next city council.
Right, so.
We could handle it all next Monday. They have to be sworn in.
Gary, pardon me, our new attorney, Dr. Troy, I apologize to you, I didn't. But when I was sworn in, I simply came to it, was asked to come by the city attorney, and we stood here in a row, all of us, and we raised our right hand.
We don't have to have. Yeah, so we're not gonna swear anybody in tonight or appoint anybody.
Yeah, well, they're not.
Yeah, let's, let's just, uh, you know, talk with Tony, uh, email Tony tonight, and we can invite them to come to, you know, the council meeting in two weeks from now, and.
And we can do it all then, and we're ready to go.
And if some of them can't come, then they can not serve until the week that they can come, but we can get a few people on. Uh, I know Kevin was willing to come in as soon as we were ready to have him, so, um, I, I don't know about the rest, but I, I think that they're willing, and, yeah, so I don't, I don't think we need to have another meeting next week. I think two weeks from now should be fine.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Who's gonna, who's gonna send them on? Somebody gonna call them or send them a note or?
He's on vacation. I, he will re, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send him an email, and then he can reach out to them. He has the names, so he can reach out to them, I'll send them.
Isn't there someone who's dead?
So I, I assume it had a chair.
They vote their own chair.
They vote their own chair, so they'll, they'll decide on their own chair. What's their?
No, I have an email about their own chair.
Any other questions for the city manager?
A very hard one. There's a bulletin board that is usually out in the lobby that has announcements and, like, that would be a place to put, tell, uh.
Ton of dollars.
Thank you, that, um, and job opportunities or whatever, and it was taken down. It needs to go back up. Do you know who has it, or how we can get it put back up?
It might be in one office there that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's where we have to, those are ordinance and stuff, so.
Yeah, we have.
That definitely needs to back up.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, um, good as the order. Mr. Sherman, would you like to start?
I have a question right now.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Uh, I also don't have anything else to add, thank you.
Okay. Question, Paul Gerger.
I was just wondering if there's some way that we can get an assistant for the code officer, because she handles two jobs, which technically I think there shouldn't be one job that she handles. So she handles administration and then she handles, handles the code. So she is, to put her overloaded, she doesn't have the time to do the code job. I mean, she does it, but not to the point that it's supposed to be.
Okay, so are you suggesting hiring somebody for that position?
Well, I'm not sure. Do, do we do that? I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, is there a way we can help? You know, so she's not overloaded like that.
When, when did the code enforcement officer become the administrative assistant? Because I don't know. When did that first take place?
It's been, yeah, it's been that way for some time.
I think two thousand seventeen.
I'm sorry?
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, okay. Can we uncouple the two positions?
It's a union position, but.
Yeah, but they just, they made it a union position a year or two ago, so now, now it's an issue, because they suggested dropping us two to part-time, two part-time positions, and, uh, because you get thirty-two hours, you don't have to pay benefits on it. But to have two full-time employees like that, you're, you're talking about adding another forty, fifty thousand dollars to the, because you gotta pay benefits at that point.
I get, I don't have the answer to that question, so.
That's been something I'm looking at, but, um, definitely needs more time to, to really, but, we, we had a lot of complaints, you know, about, about that, and after you told me everything, I thought, okay, she needs help, so let's get her some help.
We can discuss that further, see which committee it goes to. Okay, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Mr. Summers?
No, sir.
Ms. Dingle?
No, I got my, I, I have my bulletin board question.
All right.
Um.
Great. I, I'd like to ask the question, and I possibly should have done it when you said to the city manager. I'm gonna walk to this podium, because it's awkward for me to try to sit there and speak. My name's Ray Joe Harpsley. I live at a pretty Chinese Franklin Street in Nelsonville. I spent a little bit of time today going down around the pool, bumper pool, and over on Patton and Backstreet. There's a mobile home park down there that at one time was a license. I, there are only two permanent mobile homes there right now that have under pending, but there's a camper sitting down there. It's still on the tires. They have not taken it off, but there, there's no sewer hooked up to it, so I'm, I'm just wondering, do, and that was something that code probably did do. Do we monitor that? Are we still, because the inspector comes from the Ohio Mobile Home Park Association every year, and they review what's there, and if there's a finding, they issue it to them. If there's not, then they're gave a license again. But that whole area down there, I would think would be questionable, and where the fire took place, I'm not positive how long ago that's been. There are, there is a tent pitch at the end of what would have been the baseline where the home was. I'm assuming they only thought that it was up the tent pitched on, but are we doing that again? Are we having, or maybe it belongs to that person who lived there, but it's still, I don't want people doing tents on property.
So that, the tent, the person that lived in that house is actually in that tent, code is aware, um, of that issue?
He's aware of it, but that's.
Code enforcement is aware of the issue, yeah.
Are they taking any action?
I can't, I just, as soon as I found out what was going on, I would explain the situation to you.
Say, Joe?
Yeah, so that's already into revised code. You can't have campers down on Patton Street. I saw the same camper. Can't have campers in, in the city limits like that. There was a mobile home there at one time, a mobile home removed, and that doesn't mean you can just wall a camper in there. Can't put a trailer on, uh, Watkins Street, and have camping sites on burned-out properties. So there's, there's a lot of issues that the code needs to address.
And where is the tent?
On Watkins Street.
I don't know what the.
The address is one fifty-five Watkins. We, we had a structural fire there. The home was destroyed, and then the home was razed together.
And when they tore the home down, I don't know if they hauled the debris off or if they just buried the debris. So when, when you tear a house down, like you're supposed to haul the debris off and bring in clean filler, can't just bury the remains of the house in the ground.
If there's a house torn down, there should be a permit to do so, right?
Well, that one burnt down. So they went and cleaned the lot up. I don't know if a permit was issued. I don't know if there was a.
Yes, we get a demolition permit.
Yeah.
Was there any kind of inspection before they covered up the straw? They should have dump receipts or something.
I think that just happened.
Last week?
Last week, yeah.
So they should have receipts for.
When was the fire?
For dump fees.
I know the demolition was just last week.
Do, do you know if that homeowner got any assistance, or are they just homeless at this point?
Sorry, would you like me to be recognized at the podium, or could that be? So I'm glad you brought that up. Um, I'm glad I walked in right.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Could, could you please state your name?
Oh, yes, Peter Galbraith.
Thank you.
First Presbyterian Church, East Washington Street. Uh, so just a two cents to add to that, uh, you know, is that, um, I just saw her yesterday. Um, she's in really bad shape. Uh, I've kind of connected with her pastorally, um, over the last couple of months. And, um, so I believe she is living in a tent, uh, and so my concern is to continue to help to support her through any social services that I know of. She's connected with integrated services, so she has somebody that she's working with for her case, but the big concern again, like so many concerns, I mean, timing, the speed at which things happen, um, being out in the cold.
Yeah.
These are big, big concerns. I just invite all of your, your support and help in, in helping us as people approach you too.
Now, what do we do? That, that's, that's my concern. They, um, we have a, we have a Nelsonville resident that's currently homeless, living in a tent. The tenant, the tenant is an eyesore, but what are we gonna do to help our community and the homeless person?
Here, do you know if she's reached out to the TPS? Um, I don't for sure, but knowing others who are in the same situation, typically that is always full, or at least in my experiences, only full. I, I volunteer there. Oh, you do? I know it's not full, at least right now, but that changes regularly, right? So if, if she hasn't, I encourage her to call and. Sure. Yeah.
Do you know if she's contacted Red Cross or system?
She has, she has.
From what she told me.
Okay.
And you said she's connected with integrated services?
Yes.
But we should probably find out if she's been assigned, uh, anyone there.
Apparently she has, yeah.
Good, so we could get with code enforcement, can get with her connection at integrated services, and they could come up with a plan possibly to get her in suitable living conditions and get rid of the tent?
Yes.
So I think, well, I think that's another thing we need to approach.
Yeah.
Because tenants and eyesore cannot have people living in tents, but this, this was a citizen that was living in a house that did choose to be homeless, so I think getting services is the best route to get her out of the tent, get her healthy, and get rid of the eyesore. Thank you, Peter. Thank you. Um, pretty shut good as the order. The only thing I have is, it's great to have a full council again, and thank you to you three for stepping up.
Thank you.
Um, I overlooked Chief Barber. You had some information on the truck, on the fire truck?
Well, the truck, the truck's back in service. It's, we're good now. Um, what you're probably referring to is a conversation we've had earlier with, uh, just the capital improvement line, uh, six, seven, five, nine, six, nine, that the fire department uses for bumper gear replacement. Um, when this, when this, uh, breakdown occurred, I was able to, at the time, quickly move some money, and we used our capital improvement line to pay for repairs for the truck. We just need to have a finance committee, and to have that money replenished back into that account, so I can continue with the annual purchase of structural bumper gear. So, that's pretty much it.
Have you made an official request to the finance committee, or has it gone to the auditor?
Ted and I talked, I believe, uh.
I submitted it to finance, but finance was a little fluid at the time. The members changed, it seemed, actually twice within, what, like, four weeks, so.
Do you still have it?
I did.
Well, I forwarded that email, the, the original email, to all the council today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you guys should have, do you have the information?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Um, with that, we need an executive session to discuss, uh, legal matters, and invite in Mr. Sappington, Mr. Brillo, and Ms. Gallaway. And we're going to executive at eight forty-nine. Please, uh, please go on the roll, or motion.
It's also seven, uh, seven forty-nine.
Yeah, seven forty-nine. I'm sorry.
Can we give the audience perhaps an ETA of when that's going to be over, rather than make them sit there right there?
Unless you can fill the future.
Well, no, I just mean, are they. Well, no, I just mean, are they, do you wanna wait, that's the whole thing?
We will wait on you.
Okay.
It's always been that kind of thing.
Um, we go into executive session.
Yeah, sorry. First, follow the rule.
Um, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Stingle?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Tom.
Yes.
Oh, wow.